Welcome to our January 28th meeting. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All votes in favor? Yes?
Jani?
Yep.
Mr. Ririck?
Hi. For the, I believe, the committee needs to take item 6A.
Well, no, you were going to, did you have any announcements on the personnel?
Consent agenda?
No.
Oh, okay. Then we're all set?
Then I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to move item 6A, Tiverton Library Foundation, up.
Second. All votes in favor?
Yep.
Okay. Tiverton Library Foundation, so, welcome.
Hello.
Good evening.
Friendly faces?
Yes, yes.
We try.
Is this on? Does it not matter?
It should be on.
Any forum in particular, or should I just go?
Just go.
Okay. Well, so, we're building a new library in town. Have you heard about that? I don't know, do you want me to start? But if you're a Tiverton resident, you probably got this in the mail, which is the order form for engraved pavers. And this is an initiative that we're taking to fill in the very rest of the money that we need. Construction was delayed, housing market came back, and that's a good thing. So, there's a, there's a gap now between what we have and what we want. It's not a large gap, but it's not a small gap. So, there's four different size pavers, and, you know, people are marking the birth of children, grandchildren, honoring teachers, giving gifts, especially around the holidays. And it's been very well received. But the reason I'm here is because there are two different terraces. This is one terrace is going to have all of these, you know, general pavers, people who've celebrated their connection with Tiverton and, you know, remembering loved ones, et cetera. The other terrace, we're calling the literary terrace. And what we're going to do there is have an essay contest, which is going to start in a month. And we're looking for one winner per grade, and I'll be checking with some of the principals to see how young is too young. Maybe it's not second grade, maybe it's not third grade, maybe it is. The question is, you know, what book has influenced you the most and why? So, we're going to collect these essays from the school kids in Tiverton. You don't have to, maybe if you go to private school, but you live in Tiverton, you're still eligible, any Tiverton resident. We're going to have a committee to judge or assess these. And then, on this literary terrace, there's going to be a quote from the book, the author's name, the title of the book, and also the kid who submitted, the winning kid is going to get their name engraved there. And that'll be there for 80 years, until the next library is built. So, we're very excited about that, and we're raising money right now. I'm a, I have a company which is in the publishing industry. We're reaching out to our contacts and funding that, you know, through people who want to be associated with this effort. So, looking for funding sources, of course, mostly wanting to make sure that we get the word out to all the kids, and that's got to be gone, done through the schools, so that's the feet hitting the ground there. But I think it'll be a really nice adjunct to the library, where, you know, you have the sort of the one place where everybody has, you know, is talking about themselves, kind of, and then you have this other place, which is sort of an experience. I'm not putting down, talking about yourself. I definitely bought a brick to talk about my family. But this other, this other terrace, which will be right off the reading room in the back of the woods, is going to be kind of an experience. You'll walk around, and you'll get to see, you know, who's been inspired by what, and kind of keep the learning momentum going, so.
So, it's an essay contest, and we're going to have one winner per grade? Is that what I?
One winner per grade.
Okay.
And that's whatever the lowest grade is through 12?
Yeah.
Oh.
And there's probably going to be an opportunity for adults who are interested in entering, not entering the contest, but paying for the amount of bricks that is required to, to add, to have an entry there as well. But we're definitely looking at, I think, 3rd through 12.
So, you're looking to?
My daughter's in 2nd, and I'm not sure she didn't have.
Yeah. So, you're looking for us to, maybe working with Superintendent Ririck, sort of have a flyer that we can hand out? Is that what you're looking?
That would be great. And that's something, obviously, we can put together.
And then, and then have the teachers work with the different grades, really just let them know what it is? It's an essay contest. Here's what you'll win, here's where it'll be, type of deal?
Yeah. So, I was at the PTO meeting for, of middle school, and speaking with some of the English teachers there, and they were getting very excited about that possibility, maybe assigning it to the entire class.
Yeah, to tie it into curriculum somehow?
Really get the best entries that way. And also, just bring attention to the library, bring attention to the fact that there is a new library. It's kind of a little bit of a Trojan horse. Maybe the parents will say, oh, you didn't win, but we can still get you a brick. No.
They might.
You see, that's, that's what I have a problem with in general. As long as this is all about essays, it's all about kids being creative, but if this is a Trojan horse to raise money, we cannot do that.
No.
Because we cannot do this for anyone, for any cause, no matter what it is.
Agreed, agreed.
So, I would hope that you are going to erase that thought and the comment from the whole thing.
Strike it from the record, where's the video? Strike it.
So, people can do whatever they want, but we cannot bless any form of fundraising for, no matter how good the cause is.
And this is a, this is a?
The other terrace is almost completely full already.
Oh.
We're not, I mean, we're not even really looking over there.
So, maybe, maybe just work with Bill, and you'll, you'll bless it, whatever it is?
Yeah, they'll submit the flyer, and then we'll?
The flyer, and then you'll get it to the principals, so that they can, you know, what they can and can't do, and, you know, what, as far as, like Jan saying, that, you know, because we do have so many worthwhile nonprofits, groups in town that, right, that Jan is right, we can't, we can't give one preference over another, and you can't use the school district to sort of promote one over the other, but I think an essay contest is a great.
Yeah, that would be great. It's like a garden club, and the fire department does stop, you know, with posters, and they, you know, that kind of thing.
And, and we've had students, at least at the middle school level, participate in other essay contests over the years. Sometimes as a whole class, and there are, sometimes there are prizes awarded.
Right, and, right, and it's a fun, I think it's a fun thing to just have some sort of, you know, where it is a local essay contest, that's kind of a fun, fun twist to it.
And someone else is paying for the pavers.
Someone else is paying for it.
Yeah, that's good.
I think what's also a problem, might be important, to establish clear, clear rules of engagement. So, teachers, do the teachers actually choose the best three of their classes to pass to your committee, or everything goes directly to you? So, there is no, this has nothing to do with us, but if the rules are clearly defined, what is the process?
No favoritism?
Well, not necessarily, I'm not talking about favoritism, but the process. Let us assume that one of the teachers is going to say, okay, everyone write an essay, I would choose the best five, and pass two your committee. Another teacher is going to say, every goes straight to you for your consideration. So, this has to be clearly defined.
Absolutely.
So, there is no complaints later on, and?
Yeah.
Yep.
So, I mean, the intent was that they were all going to come to me, I was going to be in charge of removing the names from all of them, and then submitting them to a committee that the Tiverton Library Foundation is going to put together on public record. And, you know, there may be the opportunity to have teachers, teachers be on that committee, because they would be experts, but, you know, it would be the grades that they're not associated with, and all the names appear.
Well, I think, work with Bill, and he'll, he, you know, you can, you can be of assistance with, you know, kind of what we can and can't do, and definitely.
If he just submits a draft, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, and we'll definitely help you. That's, that's exciting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, thank you.
It's a nice partnership. And now, is it the facility study?
Yes.
Update?
Yes. Cynthia Greilak from RGB Architects is here. RGB was the firm that we awarded our contract to perform the facility study. Cynthia is here to discuss, kind of give a brief overview of what the study's going to entail, but also spends a few minutes talking about the process to complete the necessary, the necessity of school construction process, that if the district ever wants to get reimbursed from RIDE for items that may result of, from the facility study, we need to have this report on file with RIDE, so. Cynthia?
Cindy? Thank you, and good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. We were tasked with studying, basically, the two, the two older schools, the middle school and the high school, and doing the due diligence, understanding, and reporting on the building and its building systems. And the three elementary schools, we are tasked with looking at opportunities for cooling or air conditioning. With that said, the RIDE process does not distinguish between whether it's new construction, or an addition, or a $600,000 asset protection improvement. It's the same process for all of them, and they're pretty clear in what they require for a stage one and stage two. And I believe I saw in the, attached to the agenda checklist, which was part of the stage one application.
They received all, they received all 29 pages, so they have it for their review.
Thank you.
Whether they read it or not, they have it.
I kept looking for that executive summary.
So, we?
Well, we all have the, the work to do, but there is, there's a lot that the school has to provide as well. For instance, like the asset protection plan, the, the no idling policy, there's a bunch of requirements through that checklist. But one of the requirements that's required is developing a building committee for this, and they would be subservient to this school committee. And there are, within the school regulations, who they'd like to see as selected as part of that building committee. And that is part of the stage one, so that's this first step. That's one of the requirements as part of the first part of the application. So, what will happen is, we'll work on all of the stage one checklist and submissions. We'll send that to RIDE for their review and approval. And at that point, then, that what they would like to do typically is walk through the schools, see what the recommendations are, what the plans are for renovations, whatever comes out of this report. And then, they would like to meet with the building committee to explain the process, and basically their role during the process. And that's pretty, that's pretty much it in a quick nutshell. I don't want to take up a lot of your time, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, Mr. Ririck?
Mm-hmm.
I know that, obviously, the goal is to get 40% reimbursement if we can, but, like we did with the septic system, even if we can't, and we deem it a priority, we'll still, I mean, we'll still do it. I mean, I guess, is?
Yeah, we'll, we need to have the plan on file, so that we can submit whatever work we decide to do, because we haven't seen the results of the study, so that we can seek reimbursement, especially if any of the items are over a half a million dollars.
Will they, will they, if you submit a list, will they say, would they say, like, yes, yes, no, no?
Oh, definitely. They'll, they'll work with us on that and understanding it. And right now, there's a moratorium on new construction, so really, it's about health and safety issues. And they'll be very clear on other projects that we have, there's, you know, there's a new greenhouse, that's not life safety, so there's not going to be that reimbursement. However, if the moratorium is lifted, and the work occurs at that time, then there's the opportunity to get the reimbursement.
And I know there's been a lot of talk, as you, you and I think Jerry went to that meeting about?
By the way, that was an accident, that my certificate was in here. That was just to give the name of it. I didn't mean to put it in here. It was like, you don't need to see that.
Okay, so, so we, so I guess we can kind of, with, with your recommendations, we can go through, set our priorities, and some may, and some may not make a reimbursement qualify.
And even, correct, and even if you were doing a project that was no life safety, and just because you want to do it, it still needs to go through the RIDE process.
So, it sounds like we need a building committee, you know? That's the big.
Yeah, we need a building, yes, yes.
But, health and safety, do they define that rather broadly? Because I'm thinking, any improvement or, or maintenance on your building is really health and safety.
It is. A, a new roof, because your, your building is leaking, it can get mold, that's health and safety. However, perhaps cooling in a newer building may not be considered health and safety. So, it's those types of differences. And what we'll do within our report is, we'll establish what are the one and two priorities, which are your code, life safety, and your health and, you know, health issues.
Great, okay.
So, it'll be pretty clear that way, and we'll have the budget numbers.
Now, the only, the only question, because we met with Cindy and Dave, the primary for RGB last week, Doug and I, is the timeline. We will, once we get, I know we talked about a February 28th timeline in our conversation. Is that something we have to adhere to for, in other words, are we going to, I'm not quite sure if we have, the reason for the February 28th deadline would be to get this to RIDE, so we would be considered for 1415, correct?
So, it, it's interesting that you, that we're talking about this, because it's, they don't have, RIDE does not have dates written here.
Okay.
And I had a conversation with Manuel Cordero over at RIDE today. And it really is based on what your plans are, what this, what the school committee's plans are, and then you, and then you go backwards.
Okay.
So, if you plan on going for a bond referendum this year, then we'd have to be going as quick as possible to get this in for stage one, and then stage two, and then they have to go before, once they approve it, through, in front of the Board of Education, the commission, for their approval, so that it can get before legislation, before they're, before they end.
What if, like, I, I can't speak for anyone else, but, I mean, a bond is going to be na, near impossible to get. If the thought process was, we want to start accumulating capital funds, say, and in five years, do you go back from that date, then?
Well, for the stage one?
Or three years, or whatever that date is that we think we'll have enough?
It's a five-year plan.
Right.
That you have to submit, and you have to stick to the plan.
However, yeah.
In other words, in year three, if you say, a district says they're going to replace all the roofs, you need to, my, my understanding, Doug's understanding, is you have to do that work, or you risk not getting reimbursed.
Right.
Okay.
And your stage two has to be completed within a year of your stage one, so it's almost, it's, it's going before them to let them know what you plan on doing.
Okay. Even if it's five years out?
Because my question is, we're going to need time, and I think we talked about this, the committee's going to need time to digest what that report says.
Right.
And review various funding avenues, whatever, whatever it says, whether it's a bond, or whether we're going to do it, you know, we're going to try to do as much as we can.
Right.
But we need to have time to talk to, you know, our, because we have a budget committee in our community. It's not the town council or city council that, that grants the funds, so we would need to have some time, you know, before we, and this is where I get hung up, before we submit it, because we have to put a whole plan together, using what you tell us. So, I was just concerned about that February.
Well, it may be better to then go a little, you know, less expressive on the schedule if there's, if there's no urgency to get before legislation.
I don't think so for this year. I mean, for 1415.
Right.
Because it's always a year ahead.
Then there would be plenty of time.
Okay.
And doing it right for what you?
That's kind of what I wanted the committee to, to understand, that, you know, we'll have some time.
So, how will we go about getting the building committee? Will we ask for volunteers?
I will get the specs. I believe they, Cindy's firm sent me a CD. I haven't gone through it all.
Yeah, I believe that RIDE defines needs to be.
What I'll do is, I'll take a look at the specs. I've already done the cover letter.
Okay.
That we're supposed to do, and I have, I'll send it into Cindy for review, but I'm sure there's specs. I'll just, Cindy said, there's certain requirements. I haven't looked at them, so.
Well, and, and we kind of need the study, and we need to look at it.
Right.
Before we talk about a building committee.
Yes, absolutely.
No, I agree, but we need to have the, we have to have it all lined up, so.
They need to be established during the stage one.
Okay.
The committee, yeah.
And again, you can form the committee, if I'm wrong, because I'm learning as I go. We can form the committee, but they, there can be a standing committee, you don't.
And they just wait until we finish?
They wait until we're finished. So, we can say to RIDE, we, here's, we formed a committee.
We have a committee that's ready to meet.
They're on standby.
It's like our district evaluation committee meeting, you know? We have a standing committee.
We have them, and?
But we haven't had a need to meet yet, so.
The list, yeah, we'll need to, we'll need to submit in stage one, a list of names and their backgrounds.
Okay.
Well, how long is the, the process of forming such a committee? Couple of months?
Well, that's up to us.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, it depends how fast the committee. I can, I mean, once I look at the requirements.
The elementary one was pretty quick.
I can, I can send something, we can send it to all our parents, days? I mean, to post it and get people's answers.
Here is my issue. Let us, let, let us assume, as a taxpayer, I hear that.
Oh, I know.
School is, school committee is putting together a building committee, excuse me, for what?
Right.
For something they don't know yet. So, obviously, we know that these buildings have a lot of issues, and 99%, we will need to do this, but public does not know that. So, we have to put these facts in front of everyone, and say, listen, this has to be addressed. This has to be addressed in year two, three, four, five. In order to do that, we have to, this is the process. As opposed to, to some extent, putting everyone on the spot and saying, well, you know what? I already put a purchase order for that in place. We don't know what it is yet, but we are already ready to pull the trigger on your money.
No, I agree. You don't want?
We cannot do that.
Because, because, I mean, part of the facility study is not only that we wanted it, but the budget committee wanted it as well, so we need to start, we need to have a discussion with that.
And priorities, and what has to be done.
And again, the facility study, again, as Cindy said, is two-pronged. It's the middle school, high school, overall review, but also the cooling, you know?
Right, that'll probably be the more immediate issue that we can deal with, but?
Right, but once the data comes out to us in February, once you get the draft, then we can start looking at it, and then prioritize, and then, I think what Jan's saying is, then you say?
That's what I think.
We need a building committee.
I agree with Jan.
We'd like volunteers to say, here's the issues. Would you like to serve on a committee to help us?
Yeah.
And then, in the meantime, we're working with RGB to get all the files together.
Hopefully, our friends in the press and our own sort of discussion of this will let people know that we're actually being proactive here, and is consistent with sort of our director from RIDE, that we have to do an asset protection program every year, and our three elementary schools look pretty good, but the junior high and the high school are, I think they were rated fours, I think, which is the lowest grade that you can get for, or the second lowest grade of needing some sort of refurbishment, so.
Well, they're old.
Yeah, it's just another way of saying they're very old, and they need some work.
I'm a four.
Which is a nicer way of saying it. You sort of talk to your mother-in-law that way. You're a four.
I must be a five.
Now, Sally, you're a one.
It depends if five's the best, or one's the best.
So, but?
Well, one's much cheaper, per square foot.
But we, to Jan's point, I think we do have to manage the expectations politics of it.
And again, that's, that's why, you know, I think it's important to get it from Cindy as to, you know, the things we need to do.
And I'm happy to hear that you agree, that we, we can move a little slower, given that we're not really looking to get anything in this section.
Right, well, and what I, I would like to say, two things. One is that if you plan on doing any work this summer, because that's when a lot of times schools are doing their work, and it's part of what needs to, if it's, well, even when it's below 500,000, RIDE still needs to know about it. So, I think it's understanding what your, I don't know your budget for this year, what your plans are for this summer, but if it is anything significant, it really needs to be before RIDE.
Well, what's, what's significant? Like, if we install air conditioners, they don't need to know about that?
If it's over, yeah, I think they do.
They want to know.
They do.
Well, and that's, that's one reason why.
Well, what they, what we have to tell them, and what they want to know, are two different things.
Well, but, but that's one of the reasons why, actually, the February 28th date makes a certain amount of sense, particularly for the elementary schools, is because that's something we want to fast-track, and maybe within our means, who knows? It depends on what it really winds up costing. So, yeah, if it's $600,000, that's obviously going to be a big deal. If it's $20,000, we have some community support, that, that's a very different story. So, it really does depend on what the report says.
Right.
And even if it takes longer to do the high school and the junior high, you know, sort of due diligence, it would, you know, one of the commitments we made was to really have an answer to the communities of the elementary schools about their heating issues in a more timely fashion, so that we could address them, you know, appropriately. And that actually is a safety and health issue, to a certain extent.
But so is high school.
Yeah, we, we think so.
Absolutely, no, absolutely.
Until all the elements are on the table, there will be, at least I am regretted for have any discussion.
About building committee.
Pull the trigger on even $20,000, if I know that this $20,000 could be spent in another school.
Okay, but that's, that's an individual position we would all have to take.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Ririck?
I was just going to say that I think what Jan said earlier is very important, because we were at the budget committee meeting, budget committee meeting last, Tuesday, and a member, you know, we talked about the facility study, and one member said, that's just so to build a new school.
Yeah.
And that's not the case, and Jerry talked about it, just said it. We're trying to be proactive for the community, to take an independent look at our facilities to see what we need, and then work with the budget committee in developing the best ways to, you know, keep our buildings operating. You know, there's no hidden agenda or anything like that. This is, you know, we've been talking about this for a couple of years now, we've been very upfront with everybody, so this study will be very helpful, and.
This is the way to not build a new school, actually.
Yeah.
Just to sort of take care of the one we got.
Just to maintain the old ones.
Yes, I remember, it was a very small town, with basically no revenue stream.
Right.
We are building a lot.
Right.
We built elementary schools at the grace of the taxpayers, we upgraded the high school, and now we are building library, now we are going to be building, it's obviously, it's not school, school district, but this is another investment. Now, we are going to rehab the schools, and obviously, the, the farther you are in this line, you better have a stronger case and a solid, rock-solid justification that this is an absolute necessity to protect the assets, as opposed to embellish something.
Right, but we can, and I personally would not, do anything that the taxpayers were not behind.
Sure. But part of this is the process.
So, the checklist would be what you'd really focus on, on that? Try to, like, 29 pages is kind of really, be familiar with that checklist?
Well.
Or just read all 29 and be really, for us, yeah?
For the, for the school committee, I think it's just understanding the process.
Okay, okay.
We won't give a test, though.
Okay.
Be partially proficient?
As long as you get it to, you'll be okay.
Multiple choice?
We will give you the chance for you.
Yes.
Great.
No re.
That sounds great.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think I have one question in regards to that, because I know you're saying it's two different tracks in the long run, but I would think that you would maybe want to see both, all the building reports at the same time.
Oh, absolutely.
No, we do.
To the extent that that's possible, yes. But also, I wouldn't delay, you know, if it's going to be a very significant delay.
No, we talked about that, that, you know, the heating and cooling is an issue for all the schools.
But, but we want everything at once.
But we wanted it all to come, we will be doing that, we'll be looking at both and trying to put it all together.
Great, we're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy, thank you for coming.
Budget?
Just very quickly, I want to thank Carol, Sally, and Jerry for being able to come out in the, again, another cold night last Thursday. We met with the budget committee, we met for about a couple, about two hours. Again, I always, they always ask good questions about the budget. What they received, and what's online now, are all the changes, not all the changes, we didn't make many changes, but they reflected the changes we made at our previous school committee meeting, so.
Okay.
I don't think we need to go through it again.
So just real preliminary, and we'll talk again. When's our next meeting with them?
We don't have one.
Okay, well, so we'll wait until they call us.
Unless, we left it as, you know, if our number change, you know, if state aid changes, or we got a couple of retirements, we'll update them, obviously, send them the information, and if they want us to come back, we will.
Did we update them on the healthcare rebate?
Oh, we knew about it. That actually didn't come up. A little bit, it didn't really come up. Did they ask a question about it all, or? I don't remem-, I don't think so. Maybe it was just us that discussed it.
Okay, okay.
But it didn't really come up in our conversation. Because we hadn't figured out what we were doing anyway. We still have to reconsider. We still, we'll talk about that at our next meeting, but.
Okay.
It really didn't come up.
So we're, so we're sort of in a holding pattern then?
Okay, anybody have any questions on that, the budget?
When are we going to start, when are we going to look at it again? Like, we need to decide what we're going to do with that money, and I'd like to see a.
Next meeting we were going to.
Next meeting?
Yeah, we were going to talk about that, and we still have the issue of.
Look at the, I want to see a roll forward of the fund balance and that, okay.
The next one is a report on the conditions of Rhode Island schools, we just had her come, and Jerry and I had gone to it, and we just discussed the process that we have to go through with the building committee, so we can get our reimbursement back. And I was, I asked if it could be retroactive, if we could get it back to the subject. Because we, we thought that was four hundred, but it was, you know, it ended up being more, so we couldn't have been eligible for that, because it certainly was health and safety, that we're going to close down the schools, but there's no retroactive, but I did try. So that's well on that.
Do you have anything, Jerry, on that?
No, it's very enlightening, and there's a lot of, I mean, the infrastructure of the state as a whole is decayed, significantly decayed, and so there's going to be a lot of competition for school money, so the sort of more nimble we can be about it and proactive, the better off we're going to be serving ourselves, the students and the taxpayers. In that order.
Any questions on that?
There's also an issue, I guess, of consolidation and closing some buildings on the right where it's because of the funding and all that.
So, there's, yeah, there's statewide overcapacity. I don't think, actually, our corner of Rhode Island was part of that. You know, there was a scatter map that sort of showed in colors exactly where the capacity was. There was, I think, excess capacity actually in Little Compton, but it's mostly around Providence and some of the more concentrated urban areas. We are, we don't actually, I don't think we had tremendously large overcapacity.
Still, if you will, add Equine Island and Ask Probably will be one school to close.
Well.
But it's not going to happen for political reasons, but that's.
Well, there's lots of reasons why it probably wouldn't happen, but they didn't specifically address that.
They looked at individual communities.
It wasn't one of the areas that they felt was way overcapacity.
Approval of Feinstein grant for what?
Mrs. Wardell is seeking approval from the committee to apply for the Feinstein grant for her school.
So my standard question, Principal Wardell, what are you going to do with the money?
I've already consulted with Almatariyan. We will do the same thing as when this school did, when they were students, they grant money, and we like to purchase animals for all of our classroom teachers so they can use it to support the child.
Motion to approve, second.
Second. Any questions?
I would just like to thank you for following our process. I mean, of course, we never would deny a grant.
Got it right.
But it is, we appreciate the process.
A little slow sometimes the uptake, though.
Follows the favor? Okay, thank you. Tiberian Prevention Coalition, Rebecca?
I don't know, I don't know this.
No. You're thinking of the little furry orange guy.
I knew it wouldn't be that, but I didn't know that, that was great. Sally, thank you for asking me to come. Just a real quick overview of sort of most recent Tiberian Prevention Coalition activities. About beginning of the month of January, I was asked to spend some time with health and P teachers, when they're doing some of their professional development and curriculum work. So I got a chance to spend a little time seeing what they were doing, and shared some information with them about some of the resources we have available with the Coalition. And out of that came a conversation with the English teacher, Jeff Heath. Where we started to talk about some of the emergent issues that he's seeing, and some of the things that he's addressing, especially around body image issues, particularly with young girls in the middle school, of middle school age. So as a follow-up to that, I've been working with Edith Forden, who is the student assistance counselor at the high school and middle school, to try to think of some ways that we're going to work on addressing that, so the Coalition will provide whatever resources we have available and that are needed. And one of the very innovative things that Jeff is going to be working on, especially around body issue, is they're going to do some projects, one's a hand-on project, so, I don't want to steal his thunder, but basically developing a life, building a life-size Barbie doll, kind of showing how, you know, we get sort of these media images of things that are not accurate. Nobody could really fit some of these ideal images. So we're trying to be working on that, which is a little nice departure for me, it's not around substance abuse, but you know, one of those social health issues that we work with students on. So that's happening. The Tiberian Prevention Coalition is finally hiring a youth program person, someone who can follow up with some of the things that have been on the back burner, like the Above the Influence project, which is sort of a national peer model program where kids who are making really good choices can kind of find ways to communicate what those good choices are in an artistic or a musical kind of way, so it's using some art-related activities. We're going to be establishing a connection with Project Purple in the future. I know many of you have heard that that's going on in Portsmouth. And really, what that is, is a celebration and opportunity for kids who are making good choices, again, to take the opportunity to stand up and say, we're making really, you know, we're making positive choices, and we want to be recognized for that. And finally, that person would be helping us to establish a little bit of an alumni outreach project that we've been talking about for a long time. A lot of times, we have kids that go through here and there. They're really involved, and they're, they work with the Coalition one way or another, and then they leave for college, and we never get in touch with them again. So we need somebody to sort of help us follow, follow the kids that we're connected to through the high school years, through the college years, and then beyond. So hopefully, have somebody hired by the end of February to get started on some of those projects in March. Additionally, we are developing a plan to have a bus driver breakfast. My colleague, Ray Davis, who works over in Portsmouth, and I have reached out to the bus company, actually, Ray has made the actual phone connection, to get together with bus drivers and talk about some of the experiences, because as we all know, if we have our own children, you put them in a moving vehicle, and you start to hear all kinds of things, interesting conversations come up. So the bus drivers have a really interesting window in on the lives of our students. Because although they're supervised, obviously, they've got adult supervision while they're on the bus, it's a different level of structure than when they're in the classroom. And what we're really seeking to find out is sort of that bus driver perspective on what's really going on in the lives of our kids, and ways that maybe that the Coalition can be a support in potentially areas that we hadn't considered before. I was recently asked to be on the Attorney General's Marijuana Task Force, and although that's about, that's a personal thing for me, I think that my perspective is always as a representative of Tiberian. It was really nice that they recognized the work that we're all doing here, and felt like it was important enough work to be a part of that group. It's a multi-pronged sort of coalition of people. There are the heads, the head of the Rhode Island School Superintendent's Association is part of it, the head of the Rhode Island Police Chiefs Association is a part of it. So it was really kind of a nice thing that, in some ways, Tiberian got our, got our foot in the door there. So that's got, that began early in January. And then finally, Life of an Athlete, which Linda has requested to be put on the agenda for a later thing. So I'll get back up and talk a little bit more about that.
How about the April Friends' Day at the middle school, the bullying?
April Friends' Day at the middle school. Not a whole lot to report at the moment, but Sally attended our meeting on Monday. We talked a lot at the Coalition meeting about ways to, again, broaden our focus and do some more work at the middle school. We sort of touch, touch on things at the middle school, but we don't, we haven't had a really strong presence there, outside of the work that Edith is doing, and some of the work that's just done naturally there. A few years ago, we did April Friends' Day and a real strong bullying focus at the high school. It was, it seemed like a whole year's worth of focus on that particular topic. I would say it was maybe three years ago. And we did a couple of activities at the middle school, but not as concentrated. And we're really hoping to sort of get on board with that there. April Friends' Day was a concept that developed, sort of taking the fool, or the teasing, or the making fun of people out of April Fool's Day, and turning it into a positive, because we know from the research that a lot of kids who feel bullied, or who experience difficulties in school, April Fool's Day is not a day of the year that they particularly look forward to going to school. So the idea is to take that, claim it as something new, and make it positive for them. Where we're really encouraging kids to reach out to each other, to do things for one another, to be a support, to invite that kid who's sitting alone at the lunch table, invite them to be a part of your lunch table, you know, lunch group or whatever. And Sally had suggested that we follow up on a project that we had done here, involved with Name It, Claim It, Stop It, which was our bullying response, and we did a poster contest and all of that. The Peer Helping Network really got behind that, as did our advisory program at the high school. And what the hope is that we can sort of engage the middle school in that same sort of level of focus, so that maybe they can either adopt it as an annual thing, or just at least, you know, adopt it, so that it becomes part of the culture. That's part of the work that Lori and I will be talking about as we go along.
Thank you. I just had a quick question, and it kind of goes to, I guess, what we were talking about with Stu. The Prevention Coalition is separate from the school, school department, and I know sometimes people get confused, that you are your own entity. So I had a little bit of a concern when I heard you saying you wanted to reach out to prior students. You won't be getting those names, I'm just concerned about privacy.
No, we have, no, we don't get any names from the school.
Okay.
We have kids that participate with us, while they are students, they become a part of the community.
So you'll have names just from before?
So, yeah, from our own.
Okay.
We just, I don't really have the time to kind of follow up as they move on and move along in their life, so it would be nice. And they, quite honestly, you know, they're in college, but I'm not necessarily in the other group anymore, sadly. So, you know, it's kind of having somebody who can reach out to them.
Okay.
And, you know, kind of keep them in the loop, even as they move on and move away from the community.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you. Any questions on that? High school program studies, Mr. Perez?
I have to confirm, in fact, that basically it's a draft copy of isolated areas that might be left to be edited or changes or updates to the program studies. Primarily, you're going to see new course descriptions, alignment for just language along those lines of the various courses, and you'll also see pending a line of new technology after a base. And a new course replacement.
I guess my only general comment, Steve, would be, I don't know that, do we need to say common core? Can we just say accepted state standards? Because as we know, two years ago, it was the GSEs, I mean, are we going to have to change it every time we change standards? I mean, it seems to me that, you know, that's a, that's a product, that's a, you know, common core. Is, is, can we just say state standards, or accepted state standards instead of common core?
It's really up to the, it's really up to the committee.
I mean, that would be my only general comment, because standards change, so.
Okay, without, I think, why don't we just say current?
Current, yeah, however you want to say it.
That's fine.
Because they do change, as we've seen.
Okay, so will we have CCSS for current state standards?
Right. Would that be okay?
I had a question on the new class that's added, the English twelve senior project. I know we spoke about this. Was it required this year for all seniors to take a senior project class? Or is this starting new next year?
We started this year with the requirement for all students to participate in senior project class, yes. The change reflects that NEAS had recommended that we have at least one course running in our high school that is heterogeneously bound, and that is graded. And after a number of meetings, we felt like we could focus on senior projects and sincere stay. It's an offshoot of our English department, and we'd like to include it in our next NEAS report.
So they will get a grade on their senior project class that is different from their score on their senior project?
They've got a number of things to do.
It's a pass/fail, correct?
It's currently pass.
Pass/fail. Okay. That's what I'm told.
And when, how does that work schedule-wise? Are there some seniors for whom this just is not an option because of their schedules?
I can't tell you, I haven't looked at it. But they're, you know, we, we met with the guys, they made it clear that all seniors shouldn't be scheduled.
Right, they're, they're doing their best in any way.
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else?
Anyone have any questions on that, program studies?
I'm excited about the new programs, because that with the New England Tech and everything, that's going to be.
I'll make a motion to approve the program of studies as amended.
Second.
Oliver Fain?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much. Resolutes to this venue, the kneecap, does the graduation requirement, Ms. Powell?
All right, the first one, the kneecap, we sort of, we talked about this, started talking about this at our last meeting. That certainly is my feeling, that with all the waivers and the alternates, and the this and the that, you can read the resolve, that it, the graduation requirement no longer, I think, serves the purpose that they set out to have it serve, which is, you know, to demonstrate career and college readiness. I, I know this new blanket waiver, that if you go to, if you're accepted to a four-year college, well, what about kids who are accepted into, you know, who have a, you know, can go into the military? What about kids that have a job? What about kids that, you know, do go on to CCRI, and they have a commitment from CCRI? I'm not sure why, if you have a one and you got, and I'm, and I'm grateful that they do, because it affected so many kids, but it just seems sort of arbitrary and irrelevant to me that, that it's really watered down the whole point of what, and while I wouldn't have agreed with it, I think I would have had more respect for a, you know, a position that said, you know, you need, you need to have this, and, and that's what it is, but it's so watered down now. I, it's just pointless, and it really is, I think, hurting our ELL students, our IEP students. Those are the ones who are, you know, not going to benefit from the numerous, numerous waivers.
And given that the kneecaps are scheduled to be eliminated after fall of 2014, then what do we have left? We've hold, we've held two graduating classes to a kneecap requirement, and after that, it goes away because we're going to have switched exams, and for goodness sake, the first three years of the common core, using that exam, we will not be able to require any kind of specific score, because we, we won't know what our reasonable scores are until three years or more have passed, and we've started to align the curriculum. So I'm left feeling very uncomfortable that, by a roll of the dice, two graduating classes are going to be held to a kneecap score or a high stakes test, and then it'll go away again.
I just, I just, I'm not so certain that RIDE will wait three years for Park. That's, I'm not.
Well, we'll talk about that in the next episode.
I don't feel confident.
But certainly, there'll be no kneecap high-stakes requirement.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree, and I agree in both, but I'm just saying that. I wish it were three years.
And then I do see on the second page, the first whereas, whereas there will remain many children unable, the R should be who. We can say who are, or we can say unable, but not are unable. So I'll just, there will be, remain many children unable to qualify for a waiver.
Well, I have, I have a completely different opinion about testing. This all has to be tuned up, but where does the reality of the world start? Regardless of what, wherever you go, if you want to be a planner, you have to pass tests. If you don't pass these tests, it's a high-stakes test, no matter what you do. If you don't pass, you don't have a license.
But this is this particular, this isn't a blank, you know, resolve, that there should not be one, but this kneecap and the way it was rolled out, we have a problem with.
But we, you just inferred that we are talking about also the next one, because that's what Debbie said.
Well, well, no, no.
Against.
Bill said, Bill was saying he didn't think the park, and I said, well, that's a separate.
I feel that it has to.
I mean, I think that if, the question of a high-stakes test, if it's a good, valid instrument, then that's a separate discussion, that's not the discussion we're having here. It's whether we think this kneecap and the process that we followed constitutes a valid high-stakes test. And so I feel it doesn't, but are you saying then you feel that the kneecap is a valid high-stakes test, and you would like to go with it?
I feel that it has to be a high-stakes test, that people have to be exposed to unfortunate. less sometimes being rejected.
But the kneecap you feel is comfortable with?
Well, it has to be at all the high stake tests, and with everything, whether it's a production or this is a school system, any other process, the type of tools you use to do the assessment, they have to be adjusted. There is only philosophical issues that people have to be held to particular standards, and at some point, no matter what it is, it means you did not meet the standards.
So are you comfortable that the kneecap is doing that for you? Because I'm not.
For now, yes.
To Carol's point.
I will not vote for that, but it's my personal opinion, my personal belief that these things have to be tuned up as opposed to, I'm not part of the movement, I'm against all this movement, let's not test anyone, let's all be good, let's, because this basically brings people down as opposed to inspire them to meet particular standards, because that's not what the life is about, and that's not, we basically, philosophically, we castrate the society of a basic skill, which is survival skill. You have to stretch, you have to get uncomfortable sometimes, you have to be rejected, you have to try again in order to become better. The only change which comes is to put people out of their comfort zone. If, and I am teaching for thirty few years, and I have never seen too much progress being made, even with people who have incredible talent unless they're forced to be uncomfortable and do things which normally they don't have to do. And we teach it from a very young age, and some of these things are related to discipline problems with children, and some of those, it's meaning having basic skills. Yesterday, I think, there was something on TV from General Dynamics, he talked about the contract, electric boat, and they have a lot of jobs, they cannot fulfill this with Rhode Island residents because they don't know how to use fractions and communicate and things, basic, basic things. So what are we going to say? You don't do fractions, you just cut things out of paper, and if three quarters adds to the whole thing, that's appropriate?
My response would be, Mr. Bargani, that I think we need to do assessments, and I think we need to start them at second and third grade, and that we need to address it at a much younger age. We need to make sure that our third, fourth, fifth, sixth grade, that you don't, all of a sudden in high school, they've been going along, going along, going along, and say, "I'm cutting off your lifeline," because as I'm sure other people did here, "I had to pass the CPA exam to be a CPA, but if I didn't pass it, it did not cut off my lifeline. I could still go into finance, I could still study for something else." If you do not give a diploma to a child, you've cut them off from their future. That's my problem with it, just in general, but specifically, Carol's right, I just think this kneecap is so poorly rolled out that I couldn't, even if you could convince me that a high stakes test was the right way to go, I would not support this one.
I understand your argument, and I'm not voting for kneecap. I don't believe that this is perfect. I'm going to vote the other way around on the principle that this is just an introductory step or one of the steps in the movement of defeating high stakes testing, which I believe is wrong.
Okay.
That's my rationale.
Dr. Locken?
I think it's, we're sort of kidding ourselves by saying that they're not high stakes testing. There have always been high stakes tests in high school, the SAT being the one that comes most to mind. There's always been testing in high school, and there's always been the concept that you have to sort of push people, and you have to take them out of their comfort zone, and you have to have them sort of suffer the consequences of their inaction or action, whether it be good or bad. But I think the thing that's clear with regard to the kneecap is that they haven't gotten it right yet. And to then make the consequences to the student that they may not get a diploma, they may not be able to do things that, you know, such as join the military, go to college, get a job, as a result, when in fact the test is flawed, probably fatally flawed, it really doesn't make any sense. It hasn't been supported, I don't think, and it's been a lot of, you know, going back and forth, and I guess I agree with Mrs. Pollish that by their very actions, they're acknowledging that there's, that it's problematic. So I think I am in support of the resolution. I am not necessarily against high stakes testing per se. I think we have to get it right, though, and it's a long process. It's not something that you can do quickly. You know, and you could sort of say, well, we can't afford to wait. My rejoinder to that is that we can't afford to not get it right, and I think that applies to the Common Core and it applies to Park, that we'll just be spending, you know, more money that will ultimately be realized as misspent.
So, just to make it clear to everyone, this process has been a very long process. This is just my kneecap binder, kneecapping the Common Core. And Mr. Eric and Mr. Fiori and I started a governor's symposium on education, April 29th, 2010. That was Governor Kachery. And then we had a meeting May 1st. It says, "Tibetan School Committee hears complaints on kneecap." That was May 1st, 2013. Then we invited the Board of Education to come. We're not just going to do this haphazardly, this is very serious. So we had them come in August, and we asked them all their questions, and they gave us all their answers. We went up to the State Rhode Island Association of School Committees, we've been to Rhode Island College to listen to them, we've been to the Tibetan, the Portsmouth, I'm sorry, Providence Police Station, they had one there, been to Fall River, we've been everywhere. We went to hear the, most importantly, the head of education in Massachusetts, as I said before, and he stood there and said, "Let me be perfectly clear, we're putting a pause on Park." He said, "We're not going to jump into it." So this tonight is kneecap. Now, when I taught, you all know I taught special needs, and this is what I had on my wall, and this is what we talk about, the intangibles. At this school, they have to do all their subjects, they do their senior project, their community service, they don't, it means something. When I go up there and they say, "It has to mean something," it really does mean something. And last year, when they went across the stage, the paper says, "Graduation, class praised as welcoming and supportive." That comes from inside here. That's not measured on a test. That's what they said, because this last class that left was helping every student that came in the school, the unified basketball, the unified sports. So in my classroom, I had this written, "The best and most beautiful things in the world cannot be seen or even touched, they must be felt with the heart." That's Helen Keller. That's the I factor we talk about. This kid might get a one, you know, he might get a one today, he might get a one tomorrow and the next day, but he might do everything else right. He might be superb, he might be artistic, he might be all these different things, and as Mrs. Pollish said, we're slamming the door on him. We just came out first in unemployment. During the recession, we lost 40,000 jobs. We got back 20, we still have 20. We have to find a way, as we're doing with New England Tech and all the places we're going, electric boat, we're building boats. I went down to watch the students build this boat. I went in there and I said, "You're doing a fantastic job with your math." He said, "I'm not doing math, Mrs. Black." I said, "Yes, you are, you just don't know it. I might get a good mark on the kneecap, I can't build a boat." This high school is here and has always been here for every child that walks through the door. Every child is a diamond with all different facets, and it's our job, and it has been, these wonderful people's jobs, to let every facet be polished, whatever it is. Every child has a talent, and it's our responsibility to find that and bring them through and let them move forward. It doesn't mean when you graduate from high school that you're going to have to go to college. When I see Park, it makes me laugh, it's P-A-R-C with a C hanging off it. So it was all need to go to college, and all of a sudden they said, "We can't say that, we're going to get in trouble, every kid isn't going to go to college, let's put career on that." We're in education, we know you don't write a word like that. So the whole thing has been very intense, we've been going around trying to be informed. A woman gave a tremendous presentation on this in Little Compton the other night, I called her up, Peg, and I talked to her about it, and we've been trying to inform ourselves. But after a while, it comes to the point where you have to say, since it said on the first page of this or the second page, not to be used for a graduation requirement, as soon as you saw that, it should have gone into the trash. Why do you keep changing it and trying to make it work and trying to hold kids back because of it? And we certainly have high standards, we have one of the top schools in the state, it's a union school, it's union teachers, they're getting it done, and it's, we have high expectations. And I always told my kids, "If you fall nine times and you get up 10, you've got it made. Never stop till good turns to better and better turns to best, that's what Tibetan's about." And it's not that we don't want our kids to do well. I won't accept that answer, but I will accept this resolution because it makes sense right now after what we've been through. Thank you.
I'll make a motion...
Actually, before you, I'd just like to add one thing. You know, Ride did, or a representative from Ride did come and try and answer our questions, and the answers were largely unsatisfactory, frankly, which was a bit disappointing. But one question they did at least answer adequately was, is there any evidence that actually tells us that kneecap gets us the result that we want? And the answer was no, there is no such evidence. It's internally validated, but it's not validated in a sort of longitudinal, real-world kind of way. And again, it is, you know, stated on like the second page of the kneecap that it's not supposed to be used for graduation requirements. So if someone is going to really decide who should graduate from our schools, I think I'm still going to put my money on the faculty and the principals to make that decision.
Yes.
I agree, Mr. Bargani, that there needs to be accountability for students. But I also believe that accountability for students at the college level is different than accountability for students in a K through 12 environment. We're still nurturing them in a K through 12 environment, and we're still trying to help them with those skills that's going to get them there. I think what a high-stake test does is it diminishes the judgment of the professionals that we've hired to teach our students. They're not going to give passing grades to kids who aren't deserving the passing grades. The test, the kneecap test itself was meant to be, to inform instruction, it was not meant to be a high-stakes test. And to make it so is really using it for a purpose that it was never intended, and is unfair to the students who are being held to that standard. And the standard is different, because not every child in the state has to pass a kneecap test. If you go to a private school, you are not required, and you still get to go and graduate from high school, and you still get to attend the same colleges that public school kids do, but the public school kids just have to jump through that obstacle. And so I like, you know, that you're even proposing to make this resolution, because, you know, I think it shows that, that our governing body for the schools in this town is cognizant of the fact that high stakes should not be attached to testing, the testing should be to inform instruction.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Then I'll make the motion that we approve the resolution eliminating, to recommend the elimination of the kneecap graduation requirement.
And we'll send it to Ride and our reps?
Send it to whoever you would like.
Yes.
I think we said you should send it to the Board of Regents and...
Yes, Board of Regents and probably our reps.
Our representatives, the governor and the commissioner.
Okay, sounds good.
I ask the vote will be...
Wait, she needs a second, first.
I need a second.
Second.
I ask that the vote will be also reflected in that, but this was not...
Yeah, we'll say four to one.
Whatever, four to one. I'm not saying four to one, whatever, whatever it is.
We'll say it.
Well...
Whatever it comes out to be.
Unless we already took a vote.
No, but everybody just talked in favor of it, so I don't think I'm giving away the farm here.
You're not looking into a crystal ball?
I'm not looking into a crystal ball here.
And the important thing is we're just requesting that.
Ohio still has an end.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Against? Is that opposed or opposed? Okay, thank you.
The next one is about, where's the next one?
Resolution in support of House of Bill.
Resolution, in support of Greg Amore's bill that he currently has in the House. I did make sure that you all got it in their packets. Basically, what Mr. Amore is asking for is to put together a committee to review the standards, and he's also asking for a moratorium on the Park while we're doing that. The reason I'm supporting that is, as you saw in my resolution, I mean, if we're going to change standards, I mean, one of the things that we heard when I first came on the school committee was, for a number of years, three or four years at least, well, we just changed the standards, it's going to take us time to ramp up, it's going to take us time to teach the curriculum. So there was an awful lot of money and resources spent on the testing side of it while we were really just figuring out what we were doing. So I don't see the point in doing that when we know that's going to be the answer. Almost every school committee heard from their principals and superintendent and curriculum directors during the ramp up of the GLEs and the GSEs, "You need to give us time, you need to..." So why would we waste the money? So that's my sort of argument for the moratorium. I gave you guys the Common Core timeline, I spent some time looking at it up this weekend, and you'll see that in March 11th, 2010, the very first public draft of these released was standard, was released. So the Common Core State Standard Initiative released for the very first time to the public on March 11th, 2010. Several dates in between there, March 16th and March 20th, Ride was already saying, you know, "We're going to do it, this is great, our districts are eager to adopt this," and in their opinion, they may very well have been. And by July 1st, 2010, the Board of Regents, after one summer workshop that lasted for an hour and 15 minutes, adopted this throughout Rhode Island. That's a very quick, that's three and a half months. And one of my issues is, I don't think there was enough time to vet this, not only by Ride, but certainly not enough time with the rest of the stakeholders, parents, teachers, principals, superintendents, curriculum directors. They had what they called, it was essentially an executive committee, it was representatives of the governor's office, the Rhode Island Higher Ed Board, and a couple of other, their internal Ride people, and they vetted it, but no one else really had a chance to vet it. And I'm very concerned now that we're basically implementing something that there's a lot of questions on, quite frankly. I think Kentucky was one of the first communities to adopt it in their kneecap, their NAEP scores have both gone down since the two years. Massachusetts, their NAEP scores have gone down. So I think a lot of other, a lot of things go into the NAEP score, but I don't think there is conclusive data that says the Common Core is increasing achievement, which is ultimately, I think, what our goal was. And they may, in fact, eventually, but what I'm hearing is, I'm hearing a lot of really smart people on one side saying, "Oh, no, they're great, just give them a chance, we think they're great." But I'm hearing a lot of really smart, intelligent people, and especially a lot of teachers on the other side saying, "Wow, you know, we really need some time to take a look at this." And I think what Mr. Amore's bill does for us is it allows us sort of the opportunity to look at this, the opportunity that we did not have back when this was adopted. And it also allows a moratorium on the testing that is just going to be a complete waste of money and time, I think. And I have all kinds of information that I've researched and data, but that's the gist of it.
I have to say, I have read through the Common Core state standards very closely for seventh and eighth grade in English Language Arts, because as a school librarian, I'm most affected by those. I find a whole lot of things I really like at that level. I have no idea how appropriate the state standards are for math at the elementary level. I have heard the fit is not good there. It bothers me that the standards were not field-tested. It bothers me that the standards were not field-tested. I think the purpose of this study commission, or hopefully one of the outcomes, will be for us to give a closer look at the standards and what we're doing with them, whether they are appropriate as they exist, and if not, how do we change them? Because that's the other issue that really troubles me. No standards are perfect when they're first written, and all standards must evolve over time. And there is no mechanism that allows us to change or adapt them as we work with the standards and discover, you know what, this doesn't work at this grade level, or we want to add something else and subtract something. You can't get it right in a room without teaching standards to kids. So I hope that that will also be part of the study commission, a discussion on how do we allow these standards to change and adapt over time based on experiences in the classroom? And right now, that doesn't exist.
Just for those of you that may not be aware, they actually are copyrighted, the standards, by the two entities that the National Governors Association and the Chief Council of School, I'm going to get this wrong, the chief. It's basically a trade group for all of the Board of Ed, school chiefs, like guests. Those two organizations have a copyright over the standards. You may not, you can add 15%, but you may not change them.
Otherwise, otherwise, there are no standards.
Right.
So this is done, this is pure mechanics, how you establish the standards.
Well, they also have, they also have incredible liability waivers, that they waive all liability for them. They also have several warranty, you know, that basically, if we cause harm, you can't hold us liable. There's a lot of waivers and different other things, but yes, they have copyrighted. That's unusual, though. NECAP did not copyright the standards for the GSEs and the GLEs. As far as I know, my research, that's the first time an organization has actually copyrighted standards. So it is fairly unique, but...
That's basically version control, because otherwise, that's what's going to happen. If this one is going to add two words, this one is going to change one sentence, what is, how do you track these changes?
Well, maybe, yeah. Sometimes it's a product purity issue, I guess, and sometimes, sometimes, sometimes they're interested in making money, too, though. That's what copyrights really do, is they protect your financial, your commercial interest. But maybe they were high-minded about it. I don't know. I didn't ask them. They didn't tell me. Jan, do you have anything to, do you want to say anything?
Nothing, you just said the point. Nothing is perfect when it comes out. And we would never move in any particular direction. Some of these are strategic decisions. Why do we evaluate teachers? Is this evaluation mechanism perfect? And how do you define this perfect mechanism of evaluation? Now, you put a particular process in place. Everyone is complaining because this is something absolutely new. Why should we do that? And then slowly, you improve that process, including the tools, measuring tools, which you are using to control that particular process. So here we are facing exactly the same thing, but everyone is expecting that it's supposed to be perfect. Everyone's supposed to talk about this for a couple or three years because this is going to be a process of that length. And to some extent, the experts looked at this, some high-level stakeholders looked at that, and they simply said, yes, we are going to adopt this. Now, you have to live with this, and we will see where this is going to go. We will make some adjustments as we go on. For now, this is locked, because if everyone will start changing and moving the screws in this particular piece of equipment, before we run it for a while, it's not going to work, and that's where we stand right now. But everyone is going to protest this in the same way as we protested evaluating teachers two or three or four years ago, where people were marching in front of a school committee here protesting, why should I be evaluated, et cetera, et cetera, if I'm doing a good job? And everyone was scared, obviously, if someone's going to evaluate me and I was never evaluated, it gives me goosebumps. But now we live with this, and obviously, this makes sense. It doesn't have to be improved, absolutely. So part of it is biting a bullet. This is the same thing, in my opinion, and obviously, we all have our own angle on this.
Well, I think everyone is a very broad brush. I hope you're not including me in that everyone's, well, you said everyone, so I would think that would include me, that my issue really is three and a half months to basically change everything but the buildings and the buses for what our kids are going to be doing. That's a pretty big thing. I don't think you should be changing things just to change them. Let me tell you what Massachusetts did when they changed their standards in 1993, and I think we all can agree that they have, there are, you know, there are gap issues there, but I think we can all agree that when they changed their standards, they did see some improvement. They held 10 regional open house forums to solicit comments. They held two-day televised forums at the State House. They prepared a video and information and sent it to every single school district and every single school building in the state. They met directly with over 10,000 people. They distributed 50,000 brochures to PTO, school councils, school committees. So I think there's a way to go about changing standards. And I think that, especially, like I said, where it changes every single thing we're doing, yes, there was a group of 24 people who wrote these. One of them was a teacher. The remainder were mainly testing companies and publication representatives. So one of the voices, I think, that really, really was missing here were teacher voices. And since they're in the classroom, I think it's imperative, as Mass did, that we take a step back and just look at what we're doing. And as you say, nothing's perfect, and it might be changed, but let's figure that out now, because it was just such a, I mean, three and a half months with no, no, you know, really not reaching out to classroom teachers, you know, just to change for change's sakes, that's not, I agree that people don't like change, but I think the pushback now is coming from mainly parents because they're seeing the results of the curriculum with their children. And they're saying, wait a minute, you know, who thought this was a good idea? And it's really a shame that parents were really left out of this loop, too. I mean, all of a sudden, you're seeing these, what's the core? What's the core? So I think I agree with you that people resist change. I think change can be done properly so that they don't, and I think that's what Mr. Amore is trying to do, is there may, as Carol said, be some really good things here, but let's take a look at them, which we didn't do the first time.
So the bill itself, as I read it, I think someone very important was left out, and that was the NEA. So I called Representative Edwards, and I asked him if he would make an amendment to that, if NEA wanted it, you could get in touch with him, to get yourself at the table, because I think it's very important. Sometimes when Providence makes these things and they're all AFT...
Was it just AFT?
They forget that, you know, NEA. And so right away, I called Jay, called Jay, I'm like, Jay! So anyway, okay, that's the first piece. The second piece is the very teacher that was taken from Massachusetts, ELA teacher to be on this, and it was a math teacher from California. She was at the Elsie the other night, and she wouldn't sign off on it. That was very powerful to me, when she sat up there and said, no. As Carol said, at some levels, it was good, but at some levels, it wasn't good at all. So she wouldn't sign off on it, and neither would the math teacher. So the two teachers that were there, with Bill and Melinda Gates and all these governors and everything else, and I say, what do they know about it? Now, the other thing is...
Well, they weren't just teachers. They were content specialists. These are people that have written standards, including Massachusetts.
That's what they did. She wrote the standards in Massachusetts.
Right, right.
So then, you hear these S L D S, we hear so many of those. I go, what is that? State Longitudinal Database System. The data mining you've heard about, where they're asking all these questions about the personal life of the children. And we worry about all these other things that are going on, and then we say, and these kids aren't going to know. I mean, they're going to answer the questions that they see there about their pi and religious and all these other things. So that's something else to be concerned about.
And they do address that in that bill.
They do address it. But I think just to have these people at the table and look into it, as we all said, there could be some good things, but it just, let's pause, like Massachusetts is pausing and take a good look and see what we can get out of this. And Mr. Bragandi, what would you think to say?
Just, not to add what was said, but to point out, when Mrs. Pollish was talking about what Massachusetts did, you've alluded to it. Massachusetts have used millions of dollars into this. There has been no money, at least to us, that, significant dollars, to help us either with NECAP...
That's true.
...and/or park. Okay? So part of this bill, whether it gets out of committee or however it works up there, remains to be seen. But one aspect you can't overlook, regardless of whether you're for, you know, high-stakes testing or whatever, is the cost that this has on districts. We just scratched the surface of the cost. You know, we're trying to adjust it in our budget. And I just think we take a pause to say, I've been saying this for 10 years, 11 years, is how do we pay for this? We always hear districts, the retort to everything that everybody would say to the timeline, well, you've had four years to get there. That's what we hear as superintendents. You should be there by now. And even if you take that at face value, one of the things that's left out of that conversation is, well, how do you pay, how do you get us there? What costs go into it? With the training, the curriculum revision? How does that all occur? That always gets left out of the conversation. In this bill, if it were ever to pass, hopefully, that would occur with that supercommittee that the bill would create, that they would have those conversations among the other, to address the other issues that some of the committee members...
Yeah, and that's what it says, "An estimate for the full cost for municipalities to implement the Common Core State Standards, including those costs already incurred by municipalities and those to be incurred in the future, and the feasibility of the technical implementation."
Because keep in mind, we know what our state aid is. If the General Assembly funds it for the next four or five years, we know exactly what our number is. That number doesn't include any of this.
And...
Because it couldn't have, because it was passed in 2010, before the Common Core even came into line. So Ride, we're being told, districts, do all this new stuff, figure out where the money comes from, and by the way, if kids don't make the cut, you have to deal with them and their parents. That's what we have as a system right now. And if we can avoid it, or at least try to figure out a better way to handle things, I would support that. And that's what this bill seems to do.
That's a good point, too. I called Mr. Amore before I came, and Bill, he had said that part of this is just that. He wants to make sure the legislation, or the legislators, understand the cost that you're asking the districts to take on, that it's not, you know, it's not insubstantious, you know, it's very substantial.
And it's different than the high stakes question, because...
Oh, yeah.
Because the cost, what is the cost to districts with a flat, with a flat state aid? You know, that conversation's never heard. You never have it at the General Assembly. It's not, you know, it's just something that needs to be addressed, and maybe this bill, if it was passed, could help do that.
And as Mrs. Pollish said, what Massachusetts went through, I was there in '93, and after they went through all that, they went through it again and again for 10 years, trying to get it right. And who did they do? They hired the teachers to come during the summer to write the curriculum.
That's how it used to be done. That's how we do it.
That's what they did. They use the teachers, so. And the other thing is, the results just came out for the reading scores of the 4th grade around the country. And Rhode Island came out three, number three, for the past 10 years. Were one of the three states in the top for 4th grade reading. And we know we've invested a lot in ELA through the years. We all know we've done that, and it's came out, it's given results, because we just came out number three in the country.
The state of the, the state?
Yeah, the state, Rhode Island, in 4th grade reading growth. So that's very exciting.
Maybe we'll hear about that.
Well, I just told you, no one else will. Diane, would you please, do you have anything to say to the curriculum coordinator?
Yeah, I want to, it said that I do support the bill. I think considering all of the questions and the controversy, that it would be helpful to have a committee review all of that and to answer some of the questions so that whatever direction we're going in, whether they be some amendments to the standard or just some time to go through things more. So I think that it would be better to have more of this support, and I think that would be easier on everyone. And also, I'm wondering if Rhode Island should not revisit their policy on adoption of state standards, and looking at the adoption of science standards from many different states right now.
Oh, that's a good point.
Some of them have a much longer process, so maybe that's another consideration at state level.
To me, we're considering two related issues. One is the standards, and if they're appropriate, and how they would be amended. And then there's the issue of the testing and park testing. Even if I was convinced that the standards were perfect now, I have an issue with spending so much more money on standardized tests, so much more time on standardized tests, especially for such young children. In a time of limited resources, my first choice wouldn't be to put those resources into more standardized tests and more time spent taking them for 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th graders. So that's another issue that hopefully this bill will address.
I think they were very careful at the very beginning of the bill on line four, where they reference the establishment of Common Core State Standards Evaluation Commission. I think that should also say, again, standardized testing, because really, the focus of the bill is on those two issues, not that...
Where would that be, Diane?
In line four, it says, "Establishment of Common Core State Standards Evaluation..."
Oh, okay. So establishment of Common Core State Standards and...
Standardized testing.
Okay.
Because it sounds like that's the role of that commission.
Because I, all right, depending upon what we do, well, and even if we don't, personally, I want to meet with Mr. Amore, and I certainly, anything that I can bring back to him. We spoke on the phone, but we haven't met in person.
Do any of the principals have anything they wanted to offer?
Teachers, come on up.
Members of the public.
I was just going to ask you to please support this resolution. As a person living this, it isn't about implementing new standards. We've implemented new standards, new standards, GLEs, science standards. We've done that right along. But we've implemented the Common Core math this year with no real material. So when I plan a math lesson, I'm pulling from Engage New York, the Georgia Department of Ed, ONCORE, Ready Common Core, none of which have similar language. So when I teach a lesson, sometimes the homework that I send home doesn't necessarily match the language of the lesson that I've taught that day. So we do not yet have a clear picture of what the target is. So they're expected to take Park next March. I don't know what the benchmarks are for that. I have no idea what a 3rd grader is expected to do. I don't know what meets, what doesn't meet, what's close. None of that's been done yet. So I'm teaching math, kind of by the seat of my pants, trying to make sure that I incorporate the language of the standard, but also, it's not enough to just teach the standard. If that were enough, we'd be at 100% NECAP. If it was enough to just teach to a standard, we'd be doing, we'd be already there. Taking a test, the tests always have a certain language, a complexity of test problems, that you have to teach kids how to take them. And so if you don't know what that looks like, and you're not sure which program is going to get you there, it's kind of like tying two hands behind your back and saying, okay, jump off that cliff and please land on your feet. I mean, it's just not realistic at this point. We have not even implemented BLA. That doesn't come until the fall. I brought with me a sample, a grade 3 sample of Park, which will be given at the end of the year. They read two samples. One is The Peanut Man. It's about George Washington Carver. And the other one is Eliza's Cherry Tree, Japan's gift to America, engaging text for a 3rd grader, I'm sure. The Lexile score is 838, and the reading level is 4.7. It's a 3rd grade assessment. So I'm not really sure why we're expecting every child at the end of 3rd grade to read at the end of 4th grade, but we are. And we're not there yet. And so to ask us as teachers, to put these children in a position where we know many of them, or most of them, will fail, and not because they're not capable, and not because we are not good teachers, but because we haven't done the work to implement these standards appropriately and rule them out appropriately. So I'm not here to tell you Common Core's the devil, and I think we should, I'm not here to say that. I don't know yet. I haven't taught enough of it to really know whether I love it or I hate it. I know I do see gaps. We don't teach money till grade 2, that always started in kindergarten. For me, I've... till grade two that always started in kindergarten. For me, I have questions about that. I'd like to know where the progressions came from. I'd like to know why my third graders aren't adding above a thousand. I think that might be a problem later on, if you're expecting middle school and high school kids to do calculus and trigonometry, if you want to be introducing those algorithms and deeper math skills earlier, that's my opinion after twenty-eight years of teaching. But I don't know. Maybe this will be what we need it to be. That remains to be seen. But in terms of asking them to sit and take this test next May, I think we have to ask, we have to ask, what's the point? You know, to read The Peanut Man, I have kids that would be like, who's George Washington? You know, they don't have that background. They don't have that schema. We haven't built that yet. We then have to look at other curriculum and how to integrate that. It hasn't been done. It hasn't been thought out. In the past, when we implemented new standards or new curriculum, we introduced it, we field tested. It was research-based. You could look up where the research came from, how they got to those standards. That hasn't been done with this. No field tests, no benchmarks, no PD, no meaningful PD. And our hero narrative, looking at the standards and learning how to read the standard, is not PD. And so, for me, as a teacher, I would like to spend a lot of time going through the curriculum, matching it up to the national standards, and seeing where there are gaps. And so, having them copyrighted, it isn't about wanting to change them or watering them down, but maybe we do need to put money back in kindergarten, but we can't, because that's not where it is. Or maybe we do need to look at those standards and start, and make them more rigorous in some areas, but we can't. And so, that would be my concern. It's not that I think the standards would be too hard for the kids and we need to change them. I think we need to really look at what we want kids to know and be able to do, and maybe, like I said, maybe this will get us there, but to ask these children to take this test next year, and then to have it plastered all over the Providence Journal, you know, that they failed, is not fair. It's not, first of all, it's not valid. They won't have failed. You haven't given them the tools to pass the test. And, you know, it's also going to mean that we have to build our computer education curriculum, because when they have to drag and make text boxes to answer questions and split screens, there are many children, they know how to play Minecraft.
Right, that's right.
But they don't necessarily have the computer skills it takes to work on this test. And I just, I would just encourage you to pass the resolution. And I know I'm always here. I always, you know, I'm always thinking that. I'm sorry, I apologize, I have time. But I just feel really strongly about this. I don't have, I have no problem letting the Common Core play out as it will, and giving it my best shot and seeing where it goes. But I do think that you need to be our voice. We need you to speak for us, because this isn't going the way it should be going. And there are red flags. Twenty-two states are raising red flags. We don't need to be following the rest of them to the edge of the cliff and falling off before we go, oh, okay, maybe we should have asked that. So, I think Mr. Amori has a reasonable opportunity to get the conversation started. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We like that you come and talk.
We do.
We really do. Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, you see, in education, pretty much, almost everything is open-ended in some way. It is not that we already have everything carved in stone, and we know the target all the time. This is a process through which we are going to go. So, every change does not happen. We are right here, and now we are moving right here on a trigger. This is a process through which when some adjustments are made.
And you want them to meet a target. We need to know what the target is. That was my point. Like, if you want me to have third grade work to meet the standard, it has to look like that. You need to tell me that, so I know what I'm working for. Do you know what I'm saying?
Not there.
Oh, I understand, I understand what you are saying, but let us assume that the data shows that.
There is no data.
There is no data, but, okay.
Let's say we do the testing.
Let's assume we had some.
We do the testing at some point.
But assume we had some.
And everything looks pretty bad.
Okay.
Well.
Like New York?
Let's say we have a scale of one to five, and everyone's scoring one point five.
Like New York.
What are the reasons for that? Are the reasons that the materials are wrong, people are not trained, et cetera, et cetera? It does not, this does not say bad students or bad teachers. That's not what this data is saying. But if you put something in place and you measure, how do you know? So, let us assume that we don't measure anything until we have everything completely right.
That's not what anyone's saying.
How do we know if it's right?
You're making broad bush, no one said that. No one said, let's not ever do anything until everything's perfect.
Well, everything is aligned, am I right, perfectly?
No, no.
No.
I think, in a perfect world, as Denise was talking about, we would have time to get those materials that the teachers need. Unfortunately, we're gonna, our pilot test is this spring for a certain group of students, and we'll talk about that on the eleventh in greater detail. And next spring, the testing begins. But it's just not to get test scores for our internal use. They're used to grade schools. They're used to grade.
Teachers.
They will be used to be great teachers, I would assume, since the growth model is in place. So, I understand what Mr. McGundy's saying, but in the real world, there is no time. We are, everyone's gonna be criticized. If we get scores similar to what New York got, I could see the front page of the journal.
Thirty percent.
And that's a state that's used to high stakes testing, and with their Regents' assessments. And that's a whole, you know, and, you know, and if you don't pass the Regents' test, you still get a diploma. You just don't get a Regents' diploma. But that's another story entirely. But we already have seen states that have done it and said, whoa, wait a minute. So, when these scores come out, whenever they come out, it's gonna be right back on the schools, right back on the school committees, superintendents, and teachers. So, that time to adjust and make it right doesn't really exist in the real world right now. This bill, I think, whether it's a year, however long it's in there that they talk about.
I think it's just a year.
Even a year, just to have those conversations, haven't been held yet, at least publicly. And I don't think that's necessarily a bad idea.
I have a problem with the year. And again, this is on conceptual level, because some data points to problems, because otherwise, why do we measure it? We don't measure it to say, oh, great job, you got five out of five.
Absolutely.
So, when we look at our math scores, we have a problem, am I right? If we would not do this, and we would not feel bad about this, then, oh my God, how could this happen? We would not ask all questions, and we will not make any corrective actions, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. If we will look at the scores which our students get in advanced placement courses, and we will see that in some students get, a hundred percent of them passes the level three and above, and in some other, this is eighteen percent, we would not know where we have a problem and where we have to work, am I right? So, it's not about, the whole system is set up to, let me not put myself in a position that I might look bad, or that spotlight goes on me, that there is maybe something, some area where we have to look at.
But this, but this.
Excuse me, let me just finish. We cannot be, and this is not, no criticism, Mrs. Black, we cannot have a hundred percent of spotlight on success. Our role is a hundred percent spotlight on truth. Part of this is success, and part of this is potentially a disaster. And our role is not necessarily here, I feel as a committee, to be the judges and say, oh, let me just get on the carpet, who is responsible for it, fire, hire, whatever it is. No, normally, in a process improvement, and we are engaged in process improvement of what? Of education, in our case, of our students in our district. Our role is how to produce better students, how to produce more successful students. And some of these things will happen with pain. And some of these things will happen with challenges which you have to face, because not all ducks are lined up yet. But are they ever going to be lined up? Because when you try to sit on some committee, people will talk forever, like I do right now, about particular issue, and never, no conclusion is made, until someone makes some executive decisions and says, that's where we are going. Now, everyone on board, now I'm going to seek your input, as we are doing it, how we can improve that, as opposed to talking in a democratic fashion, which obviously, we live in democracy, whether we should go in this direction or should not go in a direction, in that particular direction. Because these decisions have so many different facets, and on every one of these facets, you are going to find experts who are going to speak for that, but against that, et cetera.
I think Massachusetts has shown us the right way to do it. I think the data supports that. They took their time. They reached out. They got broad support. I don't see the harm in us following a very successful model to do this thing, at least giving us a year.
For what it's worth, we've never had the chance, at the public level, to have a conversation as to the direction we're going in. It's always been from above down. This bill would at least provide an opportunity. And I agree, you can't have twenty chiefs and no Indians, or no, all cooks and no one to wait on the folks. But not to listen, or to take input, or to get feedback, is not, for example, if we're gonna make decisions in a hospital, I would assume they talk to the doctors and the nurses.
Sometimes.
Sometimes. Or in a law firm, the lawyers talk to other lawyers. They don't, you know, they talk to people who know, you know, for the most part, I would like to think, you know, in a perfect world, which we're not living, that that would happen. That's all this is saying. Plus, we're talking about costs. You can't ignore the costs. And as long as districts are gonna be penalized for these scores, and we may have a test that, or an assessment that we don't know much about, or the accuracy, we're putting a lot on this Park test on the state level. A lot's riding on it, and there's an awful lot of questions about it. And if it was just to say, we're going to the Park, and we're gonna get there and work out the kinks, I'd be right there saying absolutely. But there's a lot more that goes with it, that gets pushed to the side and doesn't get addressed. And who knows, the bill may not even get out of committee.
Well, a perfect example of the alignment, which is that what I think we're trying to explain, is I taught catechism, grade three through eight, and they changed the curriculum from the old Baltimore catechism question and answer, this beautiful.
Is this ego, Mrs. Black?
Listen, it was wonderful. And so, they have this new curriculum and this new book, and it was in color, and the kids loved it. And then we got this secret envelope given to us in eighth grade to open up and give them a test to get into confirmation. So, I opened up the envelope, and I gave it to the kids, and they all looked at it like, what is this? I don't know any of these answers. The test was on the old Baltimore catechism. So, I had to call the diocese and tell them, you cannot test these kids on this one. We never taught it. So, that's a simple example. They changed the curriculum. They kept the old test. It doesn't work that way. So, we went through the bishop and everybody. They changed it. No problem. They understood. I was the first person as a teacher that did it. The rest of them were just horrified, like, oh, my God, the kids came running out. We don't know anything on that test. So, that's the example.
That's pretty high stakes.
That's what happens in schools.
Making confirmation is high stakes.
Oh, it is.
And that program, believe me.
You get those questions wrong, boy, watch out.
Believe me, it was.
Do we have a motion?
Do we have?
Jerry has.
We don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion.
Okay.
So, I guess I am back to where I started in a way, that if we don't get this right, and I don't think we have yet, the stakes are too high, to use an appropriate metaphor, I guess. And frankly, anything that is this momentous, that has been done this quickly, is in my mind, a sloppy job until proven otherwise. So, we need to clean it up a bit. So, I support the bill.
So, the bill is asking for one year?
It's asking, you know, and again, it's, on the face of it, it's asking really two things, to look at the costs and look at the validity of the Common Core, when all the stakeholders, including parents, teachers, other educational professionals, politicians, have an opportunity to really sit down and look at it. And that appears to be the thing that has not happened, either in its formulation through the National Governors Association, or through its adoption through the Board of Regents and the Royal and Department of Education. So, yes, we do live in a democracy, and this is what democracy is supposed to do.
It's messy sometimes. It does say, Mr. McGani, the commission shall organize no later than sixty days after appointment of the members, and that no later than twelve months after the commission organizes, it shall submit a final report to the governor and the General Assembly.
So, I'd like him to make a motion to support the resolution.
Second. Anybody else have any questions? No? Okay, all is in favor? Yes? Thank you, everyone.
And Mrs. Polish, that'll be sent to Mr. Amori.
Same people?
Same people, yep.
I think, right?
Yep, sounds good.
Language for the out-of-district, Senator Bell?
Yes. This was something that we discussed last year. It involves rate-setting for out-of-district service providers. We have some students, as every district does, whose educational needs we cannot meet locally, and so, these children are educated at out-of-district facilities. And we certainly want to provide the education that these children need and deserve. I'm just interested in ensuring that we provide it in as cost-effective manner as possible, as with all of our other educational services. And it's particularly an issue with out-of-district providers, because often, and correct me if I'm wrong, there will be only one provider in state who has the program a student needs. In other words, we don't have a free market system here, where we can choose between hospital A, B, or C for this educational program, because there's only one provider in state.
Or very few, yes.
Or very few.
Very few providers. That's correct.
And I, as an educator myself, I am aware that both Massachusetts and New Hampshire have state agencies responsible for setting rates that can be charged by these out-of-district providers to local school districts. And so, we had asked last year for our legislators to have the Legislative Council and their research staff look into that and come up with some possible legislation. What they came up with instead was a bill that called for a limit of a four point two-five percent increase, I believe, on.
It was four, four two five.
Services.
Sounds, that's perfect.
And I don't know that it ever got out of committee. It was not particularly well thought out, I think, in that it was not based on any existing rate-setting model. And this has been done in other states. It has been done effectively. And so, what I would propose, I did go online to start the initial research that I expect the legislative research staff to do, because that is their area of expertise. In Massachusetts, it is the Operational Services Division of the Office for Administration and Finance who sets the tuition prices for Massachusetts-approved private special ed programs. In New Hampshire, it is the Department of Education, specifically their Division of Instruction Bureau of Special Education, which is the rate-setting agency for private special education schools. And they, they come up with daily and annual rates that are established, that are the maximum reimbursement paid to the agency on a per-child basis. So, that is what I'm interested in, seeing if our legislators can have drafted something similar.
Do you wanna, do you have links?
I do. I have the links that I can send, I guess. Perhaps all of our legislators.
Yeah, let them all, because they're all responsible for it.
Send an email, just repeating what I've said, that there are models in place in Massachusetts, New Hampshire, whereby the state gets involved. I mean, even here in Rhode Island, the Commissioner of Health Insurance has to approve rate increases for health insurance. If there's another model other than Massachusetts or New Hampshire, you know, I'm not married to either one of these models, but I do think it's something, obviously, other states have felt it was worthwhile to have some sort of state oversight on these rates, because it is a substantial amount of money. And our Department of Education has been involved with negotiating favorable rates on busing. I would hope they might be interested in, and office supplies.
Yeah.
They might be interested in.
In special ed.
Getting involved with getting us favorable pricing on special education. Getting involved with getting us favorable pricing on special education services.
Yeah, I think if you don't mind kind of typing up what you said and giving them the links, because I think that's what you kind of have to hold the hand. And, you know, there's legislation out there, and if you say exactly where it is, that should lead them enough, leave them enough breadcrumbs that they can find the legislation themselves. But you're right, last year definitely wasn't what you had in...
Nothing that... What they came up with was not something that's been done elsewhere.
So how about we'll just have a motion to have you do that?
Okay, so an email to...
Shouldn't the committee, shouldn't it be brought back to the committee for review and approval before it's sent out?
Oh, yes. The legislation, you mean?
No, what Carol's going to propose. The whole committee should see it.
If the committee wants.
Well, I would think that's how you guys normally do everything. Because you'd be approving something you haven't seen. Just a recommendation.
Yeah.
You do it any way you want.
And so if it's going to be in the form of an email with active links to...
Whatever it is that you want to write, I just think, you know, I would recommend the committee see it.
Okay.
And then just say, "Okay, send it."
Well, we sort of officially send something to them.
So bring it back on February 11th?
Yeah, we just put it on the 11th as a quick approval.
And send it to all of them.
That's all.
That's a good idea. Okay, thank you.
I won't use my crystal ball to say what the vote will be, though.
We wouldn't have to show up.
We need a 3-2 sometime.
Student-Athlete Leadership Council. I'm sorry to keep you waiting so long. No, I'm not. I'm not a teacher. Oh, yes, that's right.
It's fine. It's been great conversation. Here before you to ask your permission to, or seek your approval, to create a Student-Athlete Leadership Council. Before we do that, or we get to the Student-Athlete Leadership Council, I think Rebecca Elwell to talk about Life of an Athlete.
Just briefly, in the end of February, February 27th, at the high school, we're hosting John Underwood from the Life of an Athlete program out in Lake Placid. He's going to come and do a presentation for our high school students. And although it's called Life of an Athlete, you're really focusing it on Life of a Student. He focuses on the physiological aspects, effects of substance use on developing body and developing brain. He talks about a lot, he has a lot of, really a scientific focus, and he's an athletic trainer, so that's sort of his hook and his focus is about young people who are in training for athletic purposes and what it does to an athlete's body, alcohol and drugs. But he understands that he will be speaking to a general population here of students rather than just athletes, so he modifies his presentation to talk about the physical fitness level of people and the effects of drugs and alcohol and that. So he will be coming to speak in the morning to our students. In the evening, parents will be invited to hear a similar presentation, you know, a parent presentation about supervision. And he really focuses not just on drugs and alcohol with the kids and with the adults, but also about the importance of sleep and proper nutrition and all of the things that we know make a healthy, a healthy body, keep people healthy, positive choices. And he talks to parents about those types of things. He brings to the attention of parents things that sometimes people don't think about, and that is like when your kid sleeps with their cellphone and gets texts at 3:30 in the morning and responds. That disruption of sleep, how that disruption of run sleep has an effect on their health, their mental health, their ability to learn and be productive the following day. You know, sort of all those things, he comes out from a scientific point of view versus simply a common sense point of view. So he'll be here doing those two presentations. And in the afternoon, we're inviting our coaches to come together, and we've invited, we're going to host some folks from Portsmouth to come over as well to really give them some sort of more in-depth information about substance use, nutrition, et cetera, on athletic performance. So it'll sort of be a voluntary professional development opportunity for some of the folks that are the most directly involved with our student athletes. So that's all on the 27th. And as a... The Coalition doesn't like to do these sort of one-shot deals. We always like to make sure that it's going to be something that's sustainable, some sort of an effort that's going to follow up on that. So as a portion of that follow-up and to do something that's more sustainable, we've been talking for quite some time about the development of sort of athletic, student-athlete connection to the work that the Prevention Coalition is going to continue to do. So that's kind of what Linda's going to talk about. We've thus far been calling it, referring to it as a Student-Athlete Leadership Council. We're hoping that once, if and when it gets underway, that the young people involved will sort of develop their own identity so we can stop calling it that sort of mouthful. But we're sort of working off of the Varsity Athletes Against Substance Abuse model, which is a program that's done elsewhere through the state of Rhode Island, helping kids develop some of the leadership skills to be positive role models, especially to younger kids. So that kind of idea is that older athletes talk to younger athletes, including, you know, perhaps middle school students, about how important it is to keep yourself healthy and staying on the right track and all of that. So we decided that rather than adopting a model that, completely adopting a model that has worked elsewhere, we wanted to make sure that the components really fit the culture of our community and our school. Let Linda sort of fill in the blanks.
So as Rebecca said, we've wanted to, and I'll steal Sally's line, Mrs. Black's line, take something good and a great opportunity and make it better for our students and create an organization where they can, they can share, where they can join, where they can learn and be part of and develop what it actually means to be a Tiger. So the Student-Athlete Leadership Council, first of all, would be open to any and all student athletes, whether they compete here in the building, whether they're equestrian riders or swimmers or martial arts or dance, whatever it may be. So we're going to invite all of those students to an assembly during advisory to announce the organization. And what we're really looking for is to kind of lay out some guidelines of parameters, what the organization is about, what we're looking for. And again, when we talk about, you know, consistently making positive or healthy choices, that you demonstrate leadership, that you make good decisions, you're dedicated to your team, to your classmates, you exhibit respect for others, honesty, integrity, kindness, you're committed to your school, you're committed to your community. That's kind of some of the parameters or guidelines. I don't have a mission or vision. That's really something that we want the students themselves to build and grow. We're going to talk to them about the organization. We're going to identify their facilitators. Two of the facilitators that have been identified is Dave Landock and Billy Phillips, who have stepped forward to lead the group and be those mentors for them. Bob Murray is also involved, Jack McKinnon, Rebecca Elwell, and myself. Each and every student that's there is going to get a peer nomination form, so they will be able to nominate one, two, three, four of their peers for this leadership team that's going to be created. There will also be a process where coaches will put forth nominations, administration will put forth nominations. And most importantly, if there's any student out there who wants to set up and be part of this leadership council, they'll have an opportunity to nominate themselves. So it'll be a multi-pronged approach where every student athlete will be a part, but if you want to be part of the leadership team, you have an opportunity to step forward and either be nominated by a peer or a coach or administrator or have a self-nomination. Once the selection process has taken place by the organizing committee, we hope to have that announced and in place by right before the breaks of February 12th. And most importantly, so that they're in place and identified prior to John Underwood coming, and hopefully that they can spend some time with him while he's here. What the organization is really going to look like or what they're going to, you know, their vision or mission or objectives, that really remains to be, you know, to be seen, whatever is directed by the students. We'd love to have a community service component built into it. Not each individual student doing a few hours somewhere, but in actual, the organization themselves taking on maybe one project a year. Again, that'll be up to the students as to what they are looking to do. There probably going to be one meeting during the summer where they finalize, create bylaws, missions, visions, those kinds of things with a facilitator. And really, the rollout would be at the Athletic Information meeting that Mr. Murray does prior to the school year. We'll get the eighth graders that are coming up. We'll get the student athletes for each and every fall, winter, as well as spring sport at this induction-type ceremony where all of these student athletes will be inducted as part of the organization and really, you know, kind of buy into the creed or the expectation of what the students have identified. After that, it's really kind of going to be student-led and with their voices as to what direction they want to take it. They can do a weekly public service message or a tip of the week or something. Again, it's really, it's really up to them at that point. Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
I do have some questions. I was very pleased to hear that it's going to be open to all students and not just a small subset of students who are on varsity or junior varsity teams. So like you said, questions, dressings, or students who do dance, or I imagine even students who just like to take a run, you know, who jog by themselves three days a week. So it sounds like any student who has an interest in physical fitness.
Yeah. I mean, the intent really is if any student comes forth and says, "Hey, I really like the message. I really like what this organization is about," they're going to be part of it.
And is that clear yet, or when you say, "I really like the message or what this organization is about," but that hasn't been quite defined yet?
It hasn't really... That mission, the vision and object, all of that is... We'd like that to be grown, homegrown from the students themselves. We'll give them some guidance and directions. The kind of characteristics or qualities is really the only thing we've identified at this point as far as what it means to be a Tiger or a Tiger creed or the expectation of behavior or empathy or whatever it may be. We'd really like the students themselves to grow that message.
My suggestion is if you do want to include all athletes, that you make sure that you do some outreach other than the Athletic Information meeting or other than through coaches so that you capture those students who do something independently or outside of school, whether it's dance or fencing, because they won't have a relationship with a coach in this building. And so all students who are interested in participating could. The nominations, that would be for the officers of this group?
Yeah, would ambassadors, team leaders, whatever. There's no set number. There could be three. There could be 11. It depends on the nomination process, who's interested, who wants to step forward, who wants to take that, who's interested in taking that leadership role.
And it would be all four grades?
The ideal would be to have representation from all four grades. The ideal would be to have representation from males as well as females in the building and also to go across all oral sports as well or any activities.
And so it's four grades, and how do you see this Student Leadership Council? How does it differentiate itself from Student Council?
Obviously, it's, one of the main drivers is athletic performance, substance, all of those kinds of things. Does it differ from Student Council? I guess it has a lot of the same qualities that Student Council has. It just has somewhat of a different spin or focus on the athletic...
On encouraging physical fitness or health?
Sportsmanship. Like I said, with the tip of the day or the public service announcement or reaching out to the community, having, you know, presenters come in, concussion awareness. You know, there's a lot of ideas that have been tossed around. We've talked about even maybe at their monthly meetings, having the Student Council come in and talk to the student, our regular Student Council, to the Student-Athlete Leadership Team, having youth activation come in and meet with the Student-Athlete Leadership Team or whoever it may be and kind of share messages and successes and what's working and...
Seems like a neat idea. I think, just to sort of echo a little bit what Ms. Herman said, I think your messaging, particularly early on, may be important in terms of not making it sort of just an exclusively varsity or team sport, athlete-driven group. But I also like the idea that you're sort of letting it evolve organically.
Yeah. The intent of the announcement that will be made for the advisory period would be to give examples of if you are involved in martial arts, equestrian, swimming, physical fitness, weight training, whatever it may be, you know, you're more than welcome to join and come to this assembly. It's not going to be coaches and their teams sitting around the gym. It's going to be during the day, during the advisory where all 500 and some odd, you know, students in the building are invited to come to the auditorium during that time.
Mr. McKinnon actually attended the Underwood conference last year, a last year kind of a workshop, so it's kind of more of a kindness and everyone else is... It sounds like a good idea, and it also sounds like trying to impress upon student athletes the responsibility if they're making the decisions, why not take that message and help others make the decision?
It's sort of like peer helping network.
It's like peer helping. That's how that started.
Being role models, just giving them... You know, and it also gives them opportunities. We talk about these skills of leadership, communication, networking, all of these kinds of things when we have a speaker come in to meet them in the office, to bring them to the auditorium, to, you know, talk to them about their school, to go down to eighth grade and, you know, or the middle school sports and create those kinds of relationships with the younger, you know, the younger athletes as well as their coaches down there. So there are, you know, relationships that are built when they come here and they know, or they become to realize that, "I'm going to go to high school and I'm going to play sports, and this is kind of behaviors that are expected." Well, no, it doesn't have to be that way. If you're a Tiger, this is what it means to be a Tiger. And creating positive and healthy choices are, you know, are a big part of that.
It really sounds fantastic, and I'm very excited about it.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
I think it's a great idea, and I wish you a lot of luck with this. But I think there is an undercurrent here, which you truly have to take into consideration with that particular organization. So I'm not trying to say this in a context of this is not going to work. It's going to work, but have to be careful with the fact that to some extent in sports, especially in team sports, the leadership is understood and defined a lot by performance. It means those kids who stand out and who kind of lead the team to do the right things, to practice hard, et cetera, et cetera. And unfortunately, sometimes what happens is that some of these kids who are exceptional performers in sports are very poor role models, and these are the ones who need help the most. So now you have this conflict that this is this dual leadership. One is, and if you are lucky, it's extremely powerful. If you are unlucky, what's going to happen if, for example, three stars of basketball team, let me just say that? And you see this, that to some extent, what kind of experience kids have from the top player to the player who never sees a court during the games, what kind of experience they have, it depends on the leadership within the team. And this varies in maximum extremes from a year to a year. This is a dynamics of one or two kids who will dictate this. So the only thing, and obviously you are not green in this, you're aware of this, but the part of it is how to carefully harness this, that here are kids who never see the court. They have great character, and they are the leaders in your group. How do they work this balance of influence, let's call it this way, in a positive sense, with the other group who are the top performers? Everyone is looking up to them and said, "You know what? Who cares about this leadership group? What is this leadership group? You don't know how to shoot a basketball. Why are you going to tell me here about the leadership?" So this is the challenge in this whole thing, but overall, it's an outstanding idea. I just, I just have, and I had kids in sports, as you know, a lot for many, many years, and I have witnessed this, this swing of experiences.
Ms. Begani, what you're speaking to, I've lived through as well.
I know you do. I know you do, so I'm not saying, "Oh, I will tell you what I know. I know you know this as well as I do." It's just a question how to harness it.
And I think one of my drivers personally to support this organization is probably, you know, maybe a little bit sparked from some of that.
Yeah, I can imagine.
When we look at the nomination of these student athletes, nowhere on the nomination
When we look at the nomination of these student athletes, nowhere on the nomination form does it talk about the sport they play, the letters they have, the MVP, the position, the points they scored. The idea for me, and I know I've said a lot about this is student, you know, driven, and hopefully it happens, the idea for me is for really to raise that bar and elevate that expectation and build that culture and create that environment that exactly what we're talking about becomes a reality. But until we put something in place to have the incredible character of that child that's sitting on the bench and he's the 11th man on the basketball team, and give them an opportunity to be part of this, and to be a role model, and to be identified, and to be a leader in our school and in our community, that balance, to me, is never gonna happen.
Well, part of this is working with unified teams, and, you know, coaching younger kids in middle school. And Mrs. Palas might tell you what the vote is, but she's wrong because there will be two hands up here in terms of supporting this initiative.
Unified certainly.
My, my voice was only for one reason here, to kind of point out the challenge in this whole thing. Because it's almost like in an army which has particular command structure, official or not official, you're trying to introduce another leadership structure, how these two things are going to collide for the, for the good to win at the end.
But there's great student athletes, there's some great coaches.
Sure, I agree. Coaches have to be involved, and.
They're, they're a big part of it as well.
So is there a vote required here?
A vote to approve.
And support, yeah.
And I just have one final question.
You're adding an organization.
Are asking you for money, we aren't.
Well, do you, you're talking about bringing in speakers, do you anticipate, I mean, Student Council has fundraisers, just, do you imagine students will have to raise money?
No, at this point, I don't anticipate that we are gonna need to raise money. Part of the mission of the Coalition, this sort of comes in under the mission of the Coalition. So the Coalition is going to be supporting the initial financial needs, if they need supplies for some of the projects, or if this Leadership Council wants to get T-shirts, or they wanna have some posters printed, the Coalition will, will manage that. And I don't anticipate that at any point in the near future, or any point ever, we'll probably come back and say, oh, but now we want to be support financially. I think it's, you know, very similar to here, Helping Network and some of the other sort of youth development activities that happen here at the high school. It is very organic, and it happens, and the kids sort of develop their own leadership, and I, I loved that Lynda used the word "culture", because really that's, we want to demonstrate to all students that leadership, and athletic leadership, and I, and I completely agree with what Mr. Bagandi is saying. There is athletic leadership, which means you get the most free, free throws, or score the most touchdowns, that's one kind of athletic leadership. And then there's also leadership that's character-born, and you may be the kid sitting on the bench. And we're not trying to usurp one type of leadership for another, but this is an opportunity to give kids a, a new type of voice in this. And just really, one quick thing, we talked about this being youth-driven, and it really was multiple angles. But I work with one student now who's a senior, very athletic, would be considered an athletic leader. Talks about his experience as a ninth grader coming in and looking around and kind of looking for a role model in his own, within his own sport, and finding it kind of hard. He didn't know who was making the right decisions. And now he steps forward on a pretty regular basis, saying, if there are younger kids coming in in my sport, I want them to know where to find me. I wanna be the kid coming out and saying, you know what, you can, you can be the best player, you can be the best kid sitting on the bench, but you don't have to follow a reckless, risky path. You can be making good, healthy choices and still be a part of this culture, that's what we kind of want those kids to be moving their peers toward. Was your que, I got a question, was your question about money?
Do we, do we need a?
You're adding a club, so yes, you do have to vote. This is a new activity that would be.
Right, that was my, so it's, it's essentially a new club activity.
Correct, and you've asked all clubs to be brought before you for.
Right, and we asked the question, it's open to all, and there's no funding liability.
Well, you had a good point, that it should go to you first, but, you know, but if you waive that.
It's already done.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to begin a Student Athlete Leadership Council at the high school.
One more second. Any other questions? All those in favor? Thank you, very exciting.
Next item's the audit.
The audit?
It's not waiting. You weren't gonna start without it.
Again, is there an executive summary? The first section.
I guess the opinion upfront would be, yeah.
The committee has a copy of the entire town's financial audit. I'll briefly go through and, and point out some of the highlights from the school perspective, but we, we had another successful year. The audit opinion was clean, the audit went very smoothly. The highlights of the school-related pieces start on page 16 and 17. On page 16 is our balance sheet, our unreserved fund balance at the end of the year is $784,435, and that increased as a result of our operations for the year. Page 17 is our income statement, and you can see that the increase based on the operations for the year were $262,021. And to see what that's made up of is pretty straightforward, we have to jump around a bit. If you go to page 81, it shows that our expenses were pretty much exactly where we had projected them for the year, which is kind of amazing, it was like one-tenth of one percent off. We had $25,504 off of our expenses, so the reason we had our surplus is primarily due to revenue, and that revenue being state aid. So we had more state aid at, at the end of the year than we had originally anticipated at the beginning of the year. We had a couple of fluctuations in our expenditures, for example, we, we spent about $250,000 of one-time capital, which means that our operations were $250,000 favorable, and that was predominantly made up of favorability in special ed pensions, and because of the mild winter, we had some favorability in utilities. But you can see there, that's where the $262,000 surplus for the year gets brought forward. And the other highlights are pretty, pretty small. The, the only concern I have, we don't have any deficits in any of the, the grant funds or any of the other funds that we oversee. School Lunch Fund had a loss of a little over $10,000 for the year, and that concerns me a bit because our fund balance now is around $12,000. So going forward, including this year, we're gonna have to keep an eye on that, because the committee may have to make a decision whether or not to subsidize our School Lunch Fund if we're not able to basically break even.
Why, why was it?
Basically, participation has declined over the years, and a lot of that, our.
So healthy school lunches.
That whole wheat.
The popularity of lunches has declined as the, the regulations have increased.
And so?
So participation is down, thereby creating less revenue to cover our expenditures.
The school lunch program can serve as an, as a model for any other initiative.
This is true.
Overregulate, participation drops, revenue drops, and the whole thing, that's something.
If it's any consolation, the school lunch bid is out to, to bid this year, and we are currently working on that with our other East Bay districts. But those are the highlights that I wanted to mention. I'll be happy to answer any questions, if, if anyone has any other questions.
I know you'll be very sad, but I honestly have not had a chance to look at it, so at this late hour, I do not have any questions.
That's fine.
I know everyone's very sad about that. If I do, I will contact you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Congratulations, because that's your.
Thank you.
Great achievement.
Any announcements?
Bill Phillips, both building class, has been invited to the Mission of Guest State of Education address, which is this Thursday at 8:00.
I have a brief announcement also, update from the Parents vs. Teachers Program. They'll be hosting their Let's Get Ready for K session coming up sometime in April. And with support of the Tiverton Education Foundation, we'll be submitting a request to Bank Newport to help to sponsor that event. And as before, we will hold it in one of the elementary schools and invite all families in Tiverton with children ages three to five. So I will pass more information along when I receive it, as far as a date.
Anybody else? Then you wanna tell them about Trip to the Food Bank?
It was another adventure, but I think we might have some good news. The, the federal government updated their regulations, and they're actually a lot more flexible than the Rhode Island regulations, so I mean, we could see some positive changes.
Yeah.
More cupcakes.
Yeah. Not many ones, you know.
With fruit.